...the state mandates that we teach. We will have a foundation to refer back to making decisions and impact learning. It will be good for our teachers because they will have a toolbox, looking for ways to bring back some of the activities to develop learning strategies. It allows students to learn without realizing they're learning. Things like talking to teachers, we say, on student funding. So, when you work on tests, it'll help you increase the students' ability. It will be good for our community because we're working to develop students to be contributing members of that community. To be willing to face challenges and learn new things that don't even exist today. I'm most excited about the work that's on the learning. This was developed, we started working on this in October of two thousand fourteen when they had the first meetings with, um, community members. And we pretty much wrapped it up in May. We do have a few things that still are in between once we get into it and see how things are going. But overall, we have a plan. The plan was vital. We, Region Twenty, supported us while we were doing this. And then, find it, define our future, continue excellence, and put vice the career, college career and service ready. The first part of the plan was a community meeting that the community was invited to and we discussed House Bill Five changes, which was a House bill that took effect, um, last year. These freshmen are the first ones that are in the full, um, cycle of it where the students choose career paths. They have a lot of different options related to career and technology and a lot more opportunities for our students, especially at the secondary level. Um, one of the focuses also that the community discussed was preparing our students to be college, career and service ready, whatever their choice is, so that they do have choices. That they have, they can be able to attend college, they can choose to go straight into a career and help them pay for their college, or they can go into some service, like the military or actually a service-oriented, um, job. The process for developing the strategic plan, we had stakeholder meetings and surveys. The survey was posted online, so people that couldn't come to the meetings. And by stakeholders, we mean people that have a vested interest in what's happening, parents, community members, teachers, administrators, students. We invited students to participate. And some of the questions that were asked at that initial meeting was, what are your hopes for students? It was on the survey. What needs do you think students have to be prepared for the future? And then, what do we do well? What are things that we do well that we can build on? Um, the committee, the planning committee was made up of teachers, students, parents, administrators and board members. And so, we didn't always have all of those areas represented at every meeting, but off and on, we had those groups were represented throughout the process. And the vision that was developed, we talked about a portrait of a graduate. What do we want when our students go pre-K through twelve, P O F, I S D? What skills do we want them to have or how would we want them to be described? And the vision that the committee came up with was students possess the skills necessary to be contributing members of society with a lifelong willingness to learn. And that's this first right there, vision. And that focus was on, um, skills, people developing skills, and we'll get more into that. But also knowing that, especially our students, I say, well, all of them, but especially the younger ones, there's no way for us to really know what's going to be required of them by the time they're twenty and thirty years old. But they all, if they can learn how to learn and they can develop the skills to learn new things, they'll be able to be successful in whatever they choose to do. The next thing that we developed were the core beliefs. And these, we can read through those. I have highlighted a few of the high points. I'll be happy to answer any other questions or go over this fully with you, but I know y'all also might have other things going on. But the core beliefs focused on opportunities to develop those online learning skills through a variety of experiences. Effective communication was very important. People felt like many, um, of our youth today do not communicate effectively. They're tied into digital tools and activities and don't necessarily know how to communicate. Problem solve, collaborative workers, that's what the workforce tells us. They want people that can work together with others. And we all want our students to be productive members of society. And one of the other beliefs was that students excel when they are self-motivated. And that's a real challenge to get some students motivated. But that's especially, it's more effective when the parents, school and community work together to achieve that. And we also talked about students reaching their full potential by being challenged. And we, um, value differences, knowing that all students are not alive. And then, we treat all students with dignity and respect. And I think that's very important in getting all students to buy in and getting all parents and community members to support what we're doing. It's going to trigger a lot of dignity and respect. So you can see then, we, we set, we developed five learner expectations. The teachers met and chose two that we want to implement. And then, the committee got back together. Two, we don't want to try to do everything all at once because we want this to be something that we can accomplish. So we're going to take small steps. The first two, we thought that were most important, that the students have to have before they can delve into the other ones, is they have to have confidence and the ability to approach challenges they encounter in life. That's one of those lifelong skills, not just their math problems that are due tomorrow morning, but, um, more real world type activities. And also, students have to communicate effectively using a variety of mediums. It's important that they be able to, um, communicate digitally, but they also need to be able to communicate one-on-one. They also need to be able to write to communicate. So, those were the two that we're going to delve into to start with. Return to the next page, you can see that first one. Students have confidence in their ability to approach challenges. And you can see some of the ways that teachers, we're hoping teachers will do this. They're going to be, um, informed of some of this. Most of them attended meetings where they were, um, had, got to have input into how we can accomplish these goals, how they thought. We had specific meetings with elementary, other meetings with junior high and other meetings with high school. Because the way you implement these things with those different age group students has to be different and has to meet their needs. So, these are the overall, overall ideas and you'll see a little bit further back how it's more specific to the different campuses. Some of the things we wanted to accomplish was implement problem-based learning, like project-type things. Kids are given problems they have to solve in sometimes a non-threatening way, not necessarily graded, just, um, doing things to try to figure out how to make it better, like how to get the gas lines in the middle of a lab room. And aren't there to start with, would be a problem. Um, identify and develop skills necessary to face challenges, like when they come up against something they don't know how to do, what are some tools they can do to approach those? And then, the other one we're going to accomplish is several pages back. The communication piece. Provide opportunities for students to develop communication skills in classes and set expectations for student production of quality written work. And we're going to work with teachers a little bit more on these in the first few days before school starts. Then, um, they will also be observed as administrators go around and do walkthroughs in the classrooms and do student surveys and parent surveys to see if some of these things are changing. Hopefully, some of the way we're delivering instruction will become more real-world, user-friendly. Farther back in the back, you see where it says suggested related activities, action-specific for campus classroom. The first one, students have confidence in their ability to approach challenges they encounter in life. And you can see how it has elementary settings, uh, elementary examples, junior high examples, high school examples. So, um, sometimes we've done some of these kind of things, but we haven't necessarily done it with all students. We thought it was important to include all students in these activities. The next one, students communicate effectively using a variety of mediums. Lady that sent us this from Region Twenty did not include the elementary part. But the elementary part involved, um, oral presentations, writing and discussions across content areas, um, incorporating manners and etiquette into guidance lessons and modeling by peers, tutors and volunteers. We talked a lot in this process about using all of our available resources. Like, one of the things that the board in the, um, facilities planning several years ago decided to keep everything right here together. So, we have high school students that come over as aides, um, support people at our elementary. We have community members that come by to help out and volunteer. So, we're hoping to do some things with them to help students develop that because, um, some of you may have sat in on some business meetings where it's important that you know how to communicate across a meal and how you eat properly and do things like that. Explore different expectations from various mediums. For students to learn that you write one way in a text message and you write another way in a formal paper or, um, a portfolio or something that you're going to turn in for a part of the job application. And then, you can see what it's for junior high and high school. It gets more complicated, more, um, real world, things like interviews, but you can do some of those kind of things at lower levels too, just so. And you can read that and then hopefully, if all goes well, we'll either tweak that a little bit and maybe add another one or two the next year. And hopefully, we'll see, we'll see some more real-world activities in classrooms and more student engagement, um, increased student engagement and, um, just increased satisfaction with being at school and doing things that are fun and exciting. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, number six, moving board meetings to the cafeteria. I wanted, I wanted to talk to y'all tonight about, uh, just having regular board meetings scheduled for the cafeteria. A couple of reasons I'd like to do that that way. It's not a, first of all, it's not a guessing game, do we need to have it in the cafeteria or can we have it in here? And then, the second reason is I think it's, uh, I think it's better when it's time for closed session for board members to go to a separate room and have their closed session as opposed to the public leaving the boardroom and the board members staying there and having a closed session. So, um, y'all have any concerns or issues with having our board meetings in the cafeteria for now? And then, we would come in here and have closed sessions in here. Everybody okay with that? So, let's just, we'll, let's plan all this. And then, July eighth is our next scheduled board meeting. Wanted to see if we could move that to the fifteenth. The, uh, July eighth board meeting is right around the July, uh, fourth of July. Uh, we're going to have some staff members out before, after the tour, um, myself included. So, we wanted to see if we could, uh, move to the fifteenth. I'm sure some of y'all probably be out for that time, sometime around that.
I'll be on the beach in the Caribbean on the eights, so fifteenth is better than eight.
Any concerns with the fifteenth?
I'll be out. I'll be out on the fifteenth.
You won't be able to make the fifteenth?
We should be there for that.
I'll just call them. Skype them.
Thank you, good.
Fifteenth? Fifteenth. Okay, business manager reports, and Mr. Duke is not here tonight, so I'll take y'all through a little bit of this. Our financial report, bank reconciliation. Look at that real quick here. So you can see, I'm going to get up and show you all some. Dawn, I'm sure you're, maybe, just, I'm not sure you are. All right, so for the, uh, for our bank reconciliation, we have revenues. You can see what we budgeted for the year here. The fifty-seven is tax collections. Fifty-eight is our state, money we get from the state. And then, fifty-nine is our Shar's money, our Medicaid money that we get reimbursements from Medicaid, kids that are on Medicaid. Uh, so you can see what we budgeted for the year here, right, for each one of those. And then, here's what we've collected for the month of May. So, we've collected forty-one thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars in taxes. The state has given us almost twenty-four thousand and then, little over five thousand from, from Shar's, from Medicaid. And year-to-date, here's what we've collected as well. So you can see, we still, uh, have a big payment coming from the state, right? We're still owed about a million dollars from the state and we still have to do a little bit of collections and taxes as well. Expenses are here, here's what we budgeted for the year, seven point nine. Here's what we spent for the month of May, six hundred and twenty-nine thousand. And then, year-to-date, what we've spent for the year. The next section is all of our, um, money that we have invested or in the bank. So we have about two point six million invested in CDs. You can see all the different CDs we have over there. And then, in the bank, in our money market, we have almost a million dollars. Interest and sinking, which, uh, that money goes towards the payment of our bonds. We're at four hundred and forty-six, almost four hundred and forty-seven thousand. Uh, general operating is two point nine. And then, construction fund, which is our, for our current bond that we're, that we're building right now, the building that we're building right now, we got five hundred and seventy-four thousand. Any questions on that part? And then, the last part is our tax collections, Western County tax collections broken down by month. You can see we get the majority of our money from that, in the October area, October, November. But for this month, we've collected thirty-four thousand and we're at five point three for the year. And you can compare it to last year's, we were at four point eight. Any questions there? Okay, the next part, wanted to talk to you about budget training. So, want to kind of go through and, and look at some of our trends financially, revenues, expenses over the last few years. Just kind of, uh, review for, for board members that have been here and get information for the new ones. And then, after we do that, I'm going to kind of talk about, um, how we want to go about setting our budget. Training that we need to have for, for setting our budget for next year. Budget is approved in, uh, August, has to be approved by the end of August. So, we need to have some training before then, so we'll talk about options that we can, we can move forward during that. All right, so the first, first, uh, table that we have there is our five-year actual revenue trends. So basically, uh, the biggest part of revenues for schools come from two things. And that's your property values and your enrollment. And you can see we have, uh, enrollment and then underneath that, we have ADA, which is our average daily attendance. So what the state does is we have to turn in our attendance every day to the state. So they get an average daily attendance. And based on that average daily attendance, they're going to give us so much money, all right? So, obviously, the higher your enrollment, the higher your average daily attendance is going to be, which means the more money you can get from the state. Tax collections depend totally on our property values, right? The higher our property values, the more we're going to get in tax collections. All right, so if you look over the last few years, you see in two thousand and ten, our certified values were about a hundred and seventy-one million. Enrollment was at eight hundred and seven and our ADA was seven seventy-five. Okay? Next year, values went up a little bit, right, to eight hundred and eighty-eight, one hundred and eighty-eight million. Enrollment was about the same. If you continue to move down, you can see in two thousand and twelve, thirteen, values took a good little jump there, right? From one eighty-eight to two sixty-eight, this is when the oil really started to come into play, right? And then, from twelve to thirteen, uh, twelve, thirteen to thirteen, fourteen, you can see our values almost doubled. All right, we go from two sixty-eight to four sixty-six. And then, for this school year, this school year we just finished up, fourteen, fifteen, our values stayed about the same. So they leveled off. And then, projecting next year, we got our preliminary values in from Western County Appraisal District in April and they projected them at three hundred and sixty-eight million, which is about a twenty percent drop. And we'll get our final values in July and then, we'll be able to set our budget based on that. So, what I wanted to do, then I have revenues listed below there. So I wanted to do is kind of show you how these things affect our revenue. And the best way to do that is if we look at the two thousand and thirteen, fourteen, uh, revenues. And you can see, we collected four point six, almost four point seven million in tax collections. Right, which is a, which was, um, a big jump from the year before, from three point two to four point seven. And that's the year that our, our property values almost doubled, correct? So you can see, you can see that our tax collections went up quite a bit because our property values went up quite a bit. So we got a lot more money in tax collections. Now, go to the amount of money we got from the state that same year. Thirteen, fourteen, we got four point one million from the state. All right, which was a little bit less than the year before from the state. It did not drop, it stayed about the same as the year before because the state looks at prior year values. So in thirteen, fourteen, the state is actually looking at our values from twelve, thirteen. So the state sees that we got two hundred and sixty-eight million in, uh, in property values. So they're saying, well, you know, it went up a little bit from the year before, so we're going to drop your, we're going to drop, uh, the amount, give you a little bit, okay? So we really benefited that year. That was a benefit to our district that year because they were looking at the year behind it. Our values shot up, they saw, uh, not as big of an increase the year before. So they didn't drop their aid to us that much, but we got a lot more tax collections. So it was a benefit for us with our revenue. So you can see, we had a total of eight point eight, uh, million dollars in revenue from state and, uh, local money. Now, the problem comes when your va, when your values level off or they drop. So if we go to the next school year, fourteen, fifteen, you can see our values leveled off, right? They are about the same in fourteen, fifteen as they were in thirteen, fourteen. Okay? So our tax collections are right about the same amount, but our, our aid from the state dropped significantly, two million dollars less. Why? Because they're looking at that year before, right? They're looking at our values from thirteen, fourteen. And they see that our values are at four hundred and sixty-six million, which almost doubled from the year before. So the state's saying, all right, y'all are getting a lot more in tax collections, so we're not going to give you as much as state aid. So it went from the four point one to the two point three. All right, so we went from, uh, revenues of eight point eight billion to seven million. So, point being, anytime, uh, you've got significant increases in your property values, you're going to benefit from revenues. But when your values level off or they decrease, your revenues are going to hurt significantly. Because state is looking at prior year values, they're a year behind. Questions on that? So you can see, projected for next year, again, the state, the state is saying, well, your values are staying about the same because they're looking at prior year, they're looking at fourteen, fifteen and they're seeing four hundred and sixty-five million, which is about the same as the year before. So we're going to give you about the same amount of money. But our values aren't staying the same, they're dropping, they're dropping significantly, twenty percent. So we're not going to be collecting that four point nine million dollars in taxes, we're only going to be collecting around three point eight. So the amount from the state stayed about the same, but now the tax elections dropped significantly.
Question, I have a question for this one. What point in time do the property values come in?
One year is coming up next. The Bible's come out and had the influence.
The question I'm getting to is what, when they're projecting our property values for next year to be three hundred and sixty-eight million? Where was the price of oil at that time? On the way down? Or had it bottomed out?
It's my understanding, the price of oil, it's figured over a year's average, it's not figured by the way. They take the price of oil, they get the average, which is why they're saying for a lot of these, they're not going to be hit as hard this year because they're still, still looking at average last year and it only started dropping towards the end of last year. They're really going to get paid that year, but they get the average this year.
That's what I was getting to, it would be sixteen, seventeen. They're saying it's going to be worse than it is this year as far as property value?
Well, as far as the value of, how that figures into, into total, but again. Any other questions? Okay, next, next, uh, graph. So, we did a, a graph of just the, uh, ten-year trends of the, of the, uh, property values. So you can see the steady increase, you know, for several years there and then the big increase from eleven, twelve, twelve, thirteen. It leveled off and now it's dropping. And we've got this one down there, the incentive increase a few minutes. Any questions on that? Okay, the next graph, we compared our revenues over the last few years to our expenses. And you can see, uh, both have increased steadily until, uh, two thousand and twelve. And we had a pretty, pretty good increase in both revenues and expenses. And then, after we, as we discussed, the, the values increased in the last couple of years, or leveled off and increased, so that's dropped our revenues. And we've tried to, uh, we've tried to do the same with our expenses as much as possible. See the last graph here, it's with our expenses. So I know, uh, some of y'all are going to have the question, why did our revenues, or, excuse me, why did our expenses increase so much those two years? So I listed out some of the things that, uh, we feel caused some of those increases down there a lot. So I'm going to blow that one up and let us all see. But you can see from eleven, twelve to twelve, thirteen, we had about an eight hundred thousand dollar increase in expenses. Uh, that was the year we got away from, uh, COOP, the special ed COOP was more, sort of, took home ourselves. So that added some, that added some expenses. Uh, that year, we also added some other positions. We added the junior high council, our elementary secretary, uh, our elementary secretary slash attendance clerk. And then, we had, we added a couple of, uh, elementary teachers and then, the council receiver department added that administration. So that added to our expenses. We bought a school bus that year. We had some increases in maintenance costs. Yeah, repairs, AC repairs, funding. And then, that's the year that we also added this security. Two doors at the junior high, and then, the band hall. Those are some of the things that made up the increase in expenses that year. And then, from, uh, twelve, twelve, thirteen to thirteen, fourteen, you can see, uh, increases. Well, I, I forgot to also mention that I also, uh, we also had an increase, uh, pay increases and step increases for teachers. Back from eleven, twelve to twelve, thirteen, we gave, we gave some major raises that year. So that was about two hundred thousand dollars. And then, you go from thirteen, fourteen, I mean, twelve, thirteen to thirteen, fourteen, a nine hundred thousand dollar increase. Again, we gave steps, raises, raises to teachers and then the incentive pay that we gave to all the other employees. We added some more positions. And that was the year we purchased the water land and we had to, uh, do some work with our practice fields, parking lot, the long field. Unless you had to put back their own. Uh, there was an increase in speech warrants, there was an increase in our label fees. We had, we did some increases for our tech supplies, we wanted to fix more computers on, on campuses. We purchased some security cameras, regular systems in softball field. We started welding programs, we needed some supplies for the welding program. Also, other items, well, uh, building backs, increases in some of our insurance. Bought a couple of mowers, some increases in maintenance costs for utilities, campus repairs, AC repairs, supplies. You can see some of these things, not all of them, some of them are, are more capital-type projects, you know, one-time payments. You know, I'll say with the, uh, with the nine, nine, nine hundred thousand dollar increase, this, this goes back to show that we had planned for this whole thing where we knew that eventually values would level off and start declining. Uh, instead of giving everybody raises that year, that's the year we decided to do incentives because we felt like, uh, we knew that we didn't want to be in a situation where we had, we were adding a lot to salaries. So then, when we got that whole thing to level off, we knew. So, then when we got that whole thing to level off and revenue decreased quite a bit, we wouldn't have a lot put into salaries. So, the incentive pay helped with that area. That was a one-time pay, the incentive, kind of like a, you call it a stipend, I guess, to some of our employees that year, the one-time incentive. You're gonna get this enough here on. So, any questions y'all have with expenses and revenue?
What, the one that really jumps up to me is that, the maintenance repairs. What campus is taking up most of the, what campus is taking most of the AC repairs? These are just old.
Yeah, most of them, most of them have been replaced like in high school. Now, now we got some of them.
Those are one-time costs or are those, they keep breaking down or you've already replaced them? Basically, you spent the money replacing them?
They didn't pay. Either did the repair, it depends on what's the cost of repair, life expectancy, you know, bits that are, bits older even, it's not worth repairing. We're looking at, I would say, place every single repair.
Is that, is that, stay on maintenance costs, is that, do we have any idea if that's a trend or what the previous years prior to these were? We go from sixty-seven to?
But they realize the majority of that is, and that, like, that twenty-four thousand is not all maintenance costs. Well, let me rephrase that, we have ten to a hundred maintenance costs, maintenance costs, not necessarily repairs. That's all your facilities, our utilities over the past couple of years. That's something that we're really trying to look at and try. Do you think you require as possible utilities, make them really strong.
Did we get large grant that year also, 10, 11, or 2 in 11 and 12, we get a large grant? And just, and replace a bunch of ACs, I think, you know, high school grant? Was, and that, that may be part of the, the drops already, so this kind of stuff is safe.
We've had a lot of plumbing issues down the line. And that, that area has really increased over the last couple of years.
Plumbing repair aren't been done by certified plumber or is it just been done by people? I mean, are these, I mean, just replacement types, like, technical plumbing work?
Three, five, block five, conditions, some block, any type of repair. You know, the toilets and the bureaus, you know, get old and have to be replaced and things break and kids, kids do things to them. Anything else? Okay, and this next graph is, is just a good visual to kinda, kinda show you what we were talking about earlier. Property values related to amount of money we get from the state and the amount of money we get locally. So, you remember, our values have been increasing over the years. The blue is the amount of money we get from the state, the red is the amount of money we collect in taxes. So, you can see, back in '05, we got a significant amount of money from the state and not, not a whole lot from collection of taxes. And how that has, how that has reversed over the years as our property values have increased. So, now we're getting, more of our money is coming from local taxes and less from the Okay? And then the last one, just to, just to show you our fund balance. Trends a bit over the last five years. So, in 2011, you can see we were at two point nine. 12, we went to two point four. 13, three point eight. 14, five point one. So, at 14, it was at its, at its max. And I want, I wanna point out too that in those years where our revenues increased, right, we got a little bit more revenue, we knew that we had to put some of that aside because when those revenues stopped increasing like they were, we were gonna have to use some of that money to cover the loss in, in revenues that we're gonna have. So, you can see from 2012 to 2014, our fund balance doubles, more than doubles. And so, for this, the end of this school year, we're, we're anticipating to have to use about five hundred and fifty thousand from fund balance to cover our budget deficit. And then next year, we're anticipating to have to use nine hundred thousand. So, at the end of 15, 16 school year, we're anticipating to have about three point seven So, any, any questions on that?
Last year, when we were presented a lot of this information, there was stuff going on with the state legislature and are there anything for us to look forward there at this time? Cause that was never decided, correct?
Well, last year.
Well, there was a big judge.
There's a lawsuit going on.
Okay, right.
And so, it's at the Supreme Court level now. But we were hoping to get some money out of this legislative session and we are, we're gonna, from what we're, we're being told, we're gonna get about fifty thousand dollars next year. Basically, what, what they're doing is they're gonna wait till this lawsuit's over. They'll have a special session and then we'll see what happens from there. So, hopefully, we can get something out of that. Is it gonna cover nine hundred thousand dollars? No, we won't get that much, but hopefully we'll get something.
You know, Wade had brought this up before and I think it's something worth definitely considering because if, if oil cranks up and it say it cranks up and it got to a plateau and it produced for twenty years, you can relatively depend on that income coming in. But as it steps up, the margin we made on the way up, we essentially put it to the side and now we're having to pay the piper on the way down is what's happening. What Wade pointed out, it's true, is if the price of oil starts doing this and production is doing that as well, we could very well see our trends do this, you know, we could see our value go up and go down, go up and go down. So, I mean, this ought to serve as a good lesson to proceed like this in the future as well. So, when you see those up years and step-up years, don't run out and, oh, we got an extra million dollars in our budget this year, let's go, you know, build a badminton court or something, you know? And then the following year, you're, where's your money? So, moving forward, I think we should be aware of that, is if, if the price of oil fluctuates and production is kinda in and out, we may see it again.